items for executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection two, discussion strategy in preparation for negotiations with non union personnel specifically, the new town administrator. I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations. The non union personnel specifically, the new town administrator, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. And like all of the executive sessions when they concluded, we will be returning to open session. Is there a motion to move into?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, thanks. I messed that up a little bit, but it's all right. Any discussion seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Executive session, agenda item number five, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection three, discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority MBTA related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Massachusetts. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority MBTA related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Mass. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number six, on the agenda, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property of the Kitterbridge Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property of the Kitterbridge Library one oh one Blue Hills Parkway based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'll abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Agenda item number seven, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property of the East Milton Library located at three thirty four Edgehill Road. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any discussion? Seeing no. Ends, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'll abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And Ms. Musto has noted that she will be recusing herself from agenda items six and seven as just read. Agenda item number eight, pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty two, approval of meeting minutes. I'm going to modify this to eliminate some of the minutes because we do not have a quorum to vote on the minutes of March twenty three, April sixth or April thirteenth, so it'd be inclusive of May three, two thousand twenty two, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty two, June one, two thousand twenty two, June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two. I move to enter into executive session to approve executive session meeting minutes based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
I'll second, sure.
Thank you, Roxanne. See, any further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number six, on the agenda, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property of the Kitterbridge Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property of the Kitterbridge Library one oh one Blue Hills Parkway based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'll abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Agenda item number seven, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one, section A subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property of the East Milton Library located at three thirty four Edgehill Road. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any discussion? Seeing no. Ends, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'll abstain.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And Ms. Musto has noted that she will be recusing herself from agenda items six and seven as just read. Agenda item number eight, pursuant to Massachusetts general law chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty two, approval of meeting minutes. I'm going to modify this to eliminate some of the minutes because we do not have a quorum to vote on the minutes of March twenty three, April sixth or April thirteenth, so it'd be inclusive of May three, two thousand twenty two, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty two, June one, two thousand twenty two, June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two. I move to enter into executive session to approve executive session meeting minutes based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
I'll second, sure.
Thank you, Roxanne. See, any further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. We may now leave open session to enter into executive session.
Thank you again, Sean, and welcome everyone as the Select Board is returned to open session. This time we turn to agenda item number nine, which is discussion approval employment contract between Nicholas Milano Town Administrator and the town of Milton. We would out that there's been a very successful negotiation between the Select Board and Mr. Milano, that he, as you know, was appointed, is that date will be on September 6th, 2022. The arrangement includes a negotiated annual salary, like beginning at $182,000. It has a provision for a bonus factor based upon performance and appropriate levels of vacation. At this time, I'd entertain a motion, by the way, I should mention that Mr. Milano has endorsed the agreement. He has returned it to the Select Board's office, and at this time, we'd entertain a motion on the bottom of the Select Board to accept the employment contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the employment contract between Nicholas Milano and the town of Milton.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none. Go call. Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number ten, discussion update regarding litigation against the Massachusetts State Transit Authority MBTA regarding the condition of stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street in Milton, Massachusetts. Is there a motion to approve of the letter? That will be sent to the MBTA.
Sure, I can do that. I'll move to approve the letter to the MBTA relative to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street in Milton.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. It has been moved and seconded. Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some context to the extent that it may have been lost. You know, many years ago, we don't know exactly when, but many years ago, before the Baker administration, the stairs providing access to the MBTA station at Milton Street fell into disrepair and became dangerous and were closed by the MBTA. Over the past seven and a half years of the Baker administration, nothing, not one thing, has been done by the MBTA to fix the hazard and to reopen the stairs. Not only does the MBTA admit that it's a danger, it has a blight on our town, it's an eyesore, it's an impediment to commuters, all because the MBTA has neglected its responsibility, neglected its statutorily mandated duty, and abandoned the staircase. We've tried over several years to remind them, remind the MBTA and the Baker administration of the responsibility for these stairs. There've been letters from state representatives, including State Representative Briscoe. Senator Timblett and I, along with a former town administrator, met with the general manager of the MBTA back in January of two thousand and twenty to try to implore them to do something about the stairs. There've been follow-ups over the last two years. And the response has been to do nothing. Last December, the board authorized town council to send a letter to the MBTA's general manager demanding that the staircase be repaired and reopened. And the MBTA has not even responded to that letter. And recently, we understand the MBTA informed our state legislative delegation that they intend to demolish the staircase, but not to fix it until sometime in the next decade, which will be another ten years, which will make it twenty years. So, I mean, you know, for context here, it was almost five thousand years ago, the Egyptians built the Great Pyramid of Giza, which stood four hundred and fifty-five feet tall. And they did that in two decades, about twenty years. And here we are, four thousand five years, four thousand five hundred years, five thousand years later, and the MBTA is telling our state legislators that it's going to take twenty years to fix a staircase. So, something's wrong, something's very, very wrong here. And, you know, when something's wrong and someone isn't damaging you, and someone's damaging our town, and someone's refusing to fix it and refusing to even respond to us, the only remedy, the only choice we have is to go to court. And so, so this letter that we were voting on is a letter to inform the MBTA that if they don't respond and we can't get an acceptable plan to get these stairs, staircase fixed, we're going to have no choice but to file the draft complaint that we'll send with the letter and that has been drafted by town council. So, I think that's, that's kind of where we are in terms of the letter. The letter just, just recounts the fact that they haven't responded, asked them to respond and say, if you don't respond within two weeks, we can't, if we don't have a plan within two weeks, we're not going to have any choice but to file this, file this complaint for a writ of mandamus and for public nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. That's very thorough background. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Move to agenda item eleven, discussion approval request for proposal lease of the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H L Road to the Milton Arts Center. And Ms. Musto, you'll be recruiting yourself?
I will be recruiting myself, thank you.
Thank you. We'll call you back in at the end of the discussion. We have a proposed motion to approve the request for a proposal lease of the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H L Road at the Milton Arts Center. Mr. Zulus.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we're, I'm not sure that we're in a position at this point to act on this item. I think I would
That is, that is correct.
Defer this item.
Good. And this is a response to the way in which it is presented on the agenda. And that is the outcome from our discussion, so we will defer it for further meeting, hopefully, one in the month of September. Because we want to act on this diligently. Item number twelve, discussion open meeting law training. This is something that has been on the table for the select board for a period of time. We have town council Kevin Freitag with us. And I'd like to invite him, if he can, to join us for this particular conversation. This is a increasing matter of interest by numerous parties throughout the town. And we would like to put together a training session, a professional development session that anybody can participate in, conducting it electronically for that purpose. Mr. Freitag, would you like to add some comments? We'd like to, members of the select board, we'd like to scope it out to see what it is that we want to be sure to be inclusive of in the timetable on which we want to do this. Because we are well underway in our governance here. We have many new people serving on different committees and boards throughout the town.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Kevin Freitag, Mr. Town Council. As you described it, my office is happy to provide whomever in town government in Milton would like to retake the open meeting law, public record law, or the state ethics law. We've actually done this in the past, I think maybe probably four years ago now. There was a public records law training that I did in February. I thought it was pretty well attended and the slides that were presented, I think, were made to anyone that wanted them, the town, to review at their leisure. But happy to do that same thing again. You know, if we're looking, you know, the next few months, sometime before the year, whenever, you know, you think and you're sort of good employees and appointees and elected officials, happy to accommodate your schedule and, and set up a couple of these different training sessions.
Thank you. Any comments from members of the board, please? Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just so everyone is made aware, and Rexanne, I don't know if you were going to mention this, but during our meeting of the subcommittee on board, appointments to boards and committees, one of the things that was brought up by the clerk was the open meeting law and making sure that everybody that's appointed fills out the forms and all of those items. We are currently working together on a way to make that more streamlined so that there will be more of an annual training, an annual time to turn in those papers so that the clerk, it makes their job easier and make sure that those that are appointed to the boards and committees gets the training that's needed. So, Kevin, I know that you were also at that meeting, and one of the dates that we kicked around was in July with a training in September. And I realize that that's for next year, but I just wanted that to be in people's minds as we are starting to formulate dates and whatnot. Because I think it's a great idea. I just don't want it to be back to back.
And to your comment, if I may, having this session recorded would be a valid proposition as well, so that people who might not be able to participate would be able to access it. Ms. Musto, you're recognized.
Also wondering if there would be any kind of process where people could submit specific questions that they might want answered during one of those forums or even after, if they, if it was available online, after, like, if there were certain dates that it was offered, that you may be present or envisioning this more just something they could access at certain times. Because if it was something that they could access later, that would be great, but also have an ability to send questions your way, perhaps.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to have the presentation. Regarding questions, I think that general questions regarding specific areas of the open meeting law to address in a presentation. Specific questions, it's something that's probably back to my attention directly. I can deal with that individual or that board in one-on-one fashion. But certainly to the extent that people, you know, have questioned one particular aspect of the open meeting law, like executive session, for instance, and how to go in and out of the session, that's one that is always tricky and the folks can, you know, can benefit from some training on. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
And we have three ingredients, the open meeting law, public records, and ethics law. Should they be treated discreetly? Should they be bundled into one professional development experience? What would your preference be or your recommendation be? There's a lot there.
Yeah, I think they probably each deserve their own presentation. I think that the presentation is probably about forty-five minutes long, ten minutes left open for questioning at the end. And I think you could accommodate each one of those topics in that type of timeframe.
This makes sense to all the members of the board. Affirmative nods? A recommended timetable?
I'm happy to accommodate whatever the, would like. I mean, if you wanted to set up one, you know, in each of a few consecutive months before the end of this year and then next year, put them on, as Aaron was suggesting, in a manner that sort of predates, perhaps, like a sort of reworking of the way that boards are brought up to speed. Happy to do that, too. Have to be, you know, take place one year from now. I'm happy to do it now and then do it again in six months if that's what the town.
On that, would October, November, December be agreeable, early in each month and avoiding holidays appropriately? Okay.
I just had one comment.
You're recognized.
Thank you. The only question I had or comment I had is that we're going to have a town meeting in December, so I wouldn't want to have it right on top of that for a December date. You know, so it might be better to have like a September, October, November or something. Just I wouldn't want to have it in December because you have the holidays and then you have town meeting the first week of December. So it might be good to have it before that.
Good observation. Would that be workable, Mr. Freitag?
Lee, and if you want.
September, October, and November, avoiding Thanksgiving in late November, of course. Sound good to everybody? Okay, then let's proceed as discussed. That's our plan. Perfect. Thank you, one and all. Agenda item number thirteen was an intended discussion update on the family zoning requirements of the Massachusetts State Transit Authority MBTA communities executed by the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. We had had planned to have this on this evening's agenda, but for circumstances beyond our control, we will reschedule this to one of the September meetings of the select board. Item number fourteen, and Mr. McCullough is with us, so if he could be promoted if that has not already taken place, is discussion approval bond anticipated note by station construction in the amount of three million dollars. Mr. McCullough, can you join us? Welcome, Jan. He's muted.
Unmuted, okay.
Ah, very good. Thank you for being with us.
Okay, we held the auction yesterday for the fire station band for three million dollars. We got three bids. The winning bid was Oppenheimer and Company. They came in at a rate of three point five zero. And they're giving us back a ten thousand five hundred thirty dollar premium, which brought the net interest cost down to three point one four nine. And we figured this is enough money to get us through the February borrowing, which will borrow again to continue the process of building the fire stations.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Any questions for the town treasurer, please? See, Mr. Zulus?
No, I was just going to make the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor that's going to be made by Mr. Zulus.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to award the three million dollar town of Milton, Massachusetts bond into anticipation notes dated August thirty, two thousand and twenty-two and maturing August thirty, two thousand and twenty-three to Oppenheimer and Company at a net interest cost of three point one four nine percent.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you.
Okay, and the bonds will be in my office to be signed tomorrow morning. I usually get in like seven, ten past seven if somebody wants to come early. And I'd like to get them out in FedEx by around ten o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, I'll make a sticky note right now. We'll be there, Jan.
You're killing me. That's so early.
We start early at town hall.
He was there at seven thirty this morning. He was my first meeting. Thank you very much, Jan.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Item number fifteen, discussion approval of a proclamation, Milton glows gold. And we should have Stephanie O'Keefe with us. Is there Keith? I don't see her. Corey McQ? I don't see Corey either.
Mr. Chair, there is an MPS webinar that has their hand raised. I'm going to guess that's the public schools. But I'm not sure.
Okay, I see it. Thank you very much. Could we put it out? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Would you introduce yourselves, please, and the subject at hand?
Absolutely. My name is Stephanie O'Keefe, and I'm here representing the Milton Public Schools tonight. And I hope Carrie McQ is on. Do you see Carrie?
I see her now, yes.
Great.
So, we will, she is a panelist, so she should be coming on momentarily.
And I can't change my name. Unfortunately, I'm on my work computer, so, but I am Stephanie.
Here is Carrie. Welcome, Carrie. You are very faint. Your audio.
Let's try it again.
There you go. Perfect.
I was saying, sorry, I don't know what happened, why I came on late, but thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure. No problem at all. Glad to have you with us.
So, do I, would you like me just to kick off?
Please.
Perfect.
I figured you had teamed it up and organized the presentation and the proclamations, so please go to it.
I think we are ready. So, my name's Carrie McQ. I am a Milton resident, and I'm very excited to be here. My son, Michael, passed away in two thousand and seventeen from a rare pediatric cancer. And from his, after his passing, we started a foundation called the MCM Fund to help support families who have suffered the ultimate loss from pediatric cancer. The foundation helps pay for funeral expenses for families. The foundation helps pay for funeral expenses for families who are low income. In the New England area. As a part of that, we have been working with the Milton Public Schools of the town of Milton. And have created the Milton Glows Gold Program, which celebrates and honors the kids. And families who battle pediatric cancer. September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. As part of this, we do quite a few activities to raise awareness about cancer, about families who are impacted by cancer. But also have really created a program to bring kids, families, and schools together in a really positive fashion. Around Milton Glows Gold. There's a couple items that we do that you guys have been incredibly supportive of. Last year was really incredible. One of them is Milton Glows Gold Night, where families in town. Put candles in their windows and gold ribbons on their doors to celebrate pediatric cancer awareness. And then also people sign up to participate in a run, walk, ride, in the hopes of pledging. The number of miles that are equivalent to the number who are diagnosed each year with pediatric cancer. Last year, a couple pretty big things happened. Governor Baker lit the Zacon Bridge gold in honor of Milton Glows Gold. And this year, I'm hoping, we're hoping that they're actually gonna, they've committed so far. We haven't had the final answer, but we believe. That they're going to also glow the State House gold in honor of the work of Milton Glows Gold. So I'm hoping, first of all, you guys have done a lot of great things for us. You have given us the opportunity to have the banner in front of town hall, you, the electronic billboard. And a lot of other kind of great pieces. I'm hoping to build on that excitement in a couple of ways. One is. To have the town of Milton proclaim, excuse me, proclaim September thirtieth as Milton Glows Gold Day. And then we'd also in any way love you guys to participate in the run, walk, ride with a pledge to kind of get involved. Another piece I did not mention, and I really need to because they've been incredible, is the Milton Police Department and Milton Fire Departments. Have also gotten teams. They've challenged each other. They've raised a lot of money. They're wearing gold ribbons. And so really. Kind of across the town, there's been an incredible amount of support. So I think my requests are twofold. One is to make the thirtieth Milton Glows Gold Day. Kind of proclamation from you. And the second is for you guys to at least personally consider getting involved.
Thank you, and you're to be commended for what you have done. It's extraordinary.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
So the schools are thrilled to be involved. This is our third year, two thousand and nineteen. We took a break in two thousand and twenty for COVID. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, we had an incredibly successful year supporting MCM and Milton Glows Gold. And for us, it's just a fantastic way to start the school year. The elementary schools are excited anyway, and this gives them sort of a focus. Our older kids, our fifth graders, our eighth graders, our upperclassmen at the high school. Serve to sort of, you know, lead the school in collecting coins and wearing gold. Supporting Milton Glows Gold Day, signing up to run, walk, and bike. They get excited because last year the MPD came to the schools on the thirtieth, which is, you know, a lot of fun. So for us, it's a win-win. We get to support a terrific. Organization that does fantastic work with really local Milton ties. And it serves as a great community builder for us as we get back to school. So we're excited. We kick off on Monday, the twelfth of September, I think, or the thirteenth, whatever that Monday is. And we bring it right through to the end of the month. So for us, it's great. We're looking forward to it. We start school a week from. Tomorrow, and we kick off Milton Glows Gold a couple weeks after that. So we're excited. And thanks for having us tonight. We're really looking forward to the month.
Thank you very kindly. And we have a proclamation. If we, either you or I could read it, if, whatever your preference.
You can read it, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I will edit the bottom of the proclamation and change it to September. We hereby proclaim September thirtieth. A glow school day.
Thank you. The proclamation with that inundation will be as follows. Whereas the Michael C. McQ Memorial Fund was founded to honor the life of Michael McQ, a Milton boy who died from cancer in the summer of two thousand and seventeen. The fund focuses its giving on funeral and memorial expenses for low-income families that lose a child. Whereas September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and in September two thousand and nineteen. The MCM Fund launched Milton Glows Gold as a way to raise awareness of the realities of childhood cancer in the United States. After a break in two thousand and twenty due to COVID, Milton Glows Gold came roaring back in two thousand and twenty-one. Milton's generosity and enthusiasm took new heights and exceeded all expectations. The events throughout the month of September two thousand and twenty-one raised more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars. With support from almost twelve hundred participants in a dozen businesses. The Milton Public Schools is a proud partner in Milton Glows Gold. And the events serve as a way to bring students, families, and staff together around a special and important issue. Whereas events include a Milton Glows Gold Night on September thirtieth. As families put gold ribbons on their doors and lights in their windows to show support. MPS schools participate in MGG in many ways, including wearing their MGG gold. Swag, collecting coins, donate, wearing gold at athletic events. Generating excitement on social media, helping out with donation drives, and more. Milton Glows Gold also had a walk, run, ride component. That attempts to collectively complete a whopping fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five miles. One mile for every child diagnosed with cancer each year. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the select board of Milton, hereby urge all citizens of the town of Milton. To join us and recognize in Milton Glows Gold. Your business day, Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, by the Milton Select Board. I would. Ask for endorsement by the select board by acclamation, but we have to do a roll. Call vote, so Mr. Zulus.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
It's a tie. Ms. Musto, you got the last tie.
I know.
So Ms. Bradley, you have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle. It is unanimous by the participating select board members. Thank you both. Very, very kind.
Thank you.
It was really lovely and incredible.
Chair Doyle?
Yes, please. Ms. Musto? And then Zulus.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend Carrie for all of this work, you know, taking a tragedy and making it into something positive. And I really commend you for that. Sounds like they do, you do wonderful work. And I do like the fact it's September thirtieth because that's my birthday.
My birthday is tomorrow. See, we can, we have a beginning and the end. Thank you so much.
But I really commend you. That's hard to do.
This would not happen without the incredible support from Stephanie and our board. Really, the town of Milton has gone, has gone all out.
Nice to hear.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. You're nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this, Stephanie and Carrie. And I just want to clarify one thing. When I, when I looked at the participation, I want to. Address the partition, participation ask. When I looked at it, I thought it was, it was one mile. Run, walk, or bike, and I thought, well, I could drag my sore Achilles one mile running, but, but it's one mile for each of the fifty. So. So is the idea just run as much as you can to tabulate as many as possible, or?
So it's collective. So all of Milton coming together to complete the mileage. And so it's however many miles that you can commit in the entire month of October. So in September.
October, okay.
Yes, so in September, you make a pledge for X and up. So let's say you wanted to do a mile a day, and I really think you can do a lot more than that, but let's just say that you're.
More than a mile a day?
Let's say that all you Achilles could do is one mile.
Thirty years ago, maybe.
Thirty miles. Would be your pledge. So we're trying to get across the town, we're trying to get fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five miles, so one for each kid diagnosed. We'll give you a T-shirt if you can do one for every day.
You got it, Mike. I.
One for every day, you gotta do thirty.
Thirty days, like thirty miles in a month.
Well, no, I'm not a spring chicken anymore.
So confident in you.
October's thirty-one days.
Yes, please.
Carrie, we'll get in trouble if we don't mention that we're also having two blood drives. And we don't have the dates yet. We're waiting for children's. They'll be mobile. And I think one will be at Pierce and one's at Cunningham Hall in the outside. So we'll get those dates out as soon as Children's Hospital commits, but there'll be two in September, which will be great.
Terrific. I just want to mention that, though I've given Mr. Zulus some grief, I also should give Mr. Doyle some grief as well. Mr. Doyle, I think you might be able to cap the number of miles that Mr. Zulus is doing.
Well, I am a retired marathoner, so you've given me an incentive to dust off my. Bunny shoes and see if I can still do something.
We will keep, we will keep our eye out for all of you.
The challenge, the challenge is accepted.
This is why I've never been invited back again. I understand.
Love to have you back. We look forward to it next year, and happy birthdays all around.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Good evening. We'll move on at this time to agenda item number sixteen, which is discussion approval. Requirements for appointing a zoning administrator as provided for in section nine dash F. Of Milton's zoning bylaw. And we have Mr. Frondak with us this evening. He's been promoted to panelist, and let's wait for him to join us to give an introduction to this very important topic. Thank you, Mr. Frondak. It's great having you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle, members of the board, Ms. Fagan, Mr. Napoli. Pleasure to be here. So we are. Looking to utilize a section of our zoning bylaw that hasn't, that was. Approved by town meeting back in approximately nineteen eighty-nine, but we've never had the need to use it. And as a result of the onslaught of forty B proposals from the various developers. It has really taken up all of the time of the zoning board of appeals. Which I'd like to just take a moment to acknowledge. The amazing volunteerism and commitment, dedication that they've made to the town in persevering through those hearings. But as a result of, of all of those hearings, the regular hearings for the residents of Milton. The individual properties, people looking to put additions on and seeking special permits for. In-law apartments have been delayed. The board hasn't been able to get to them, so we have a significant backlog of cases. And it was pointed out to us, actually by attorney Marion McGettrick. That this section of the zoning bylaw existed and could possibly, if we were to utilize it, could possibly. Create an expedited process to deal with some of, some of the backlog. So we're hoping to. We're hoping to get the board's support in moving forward with that process and utilizing a zoning administrator. And it is a three-part process. The first, the first, tonight, what we're here to do is approve the qualifications for the, for a zoning administrator. Once that's complete, the zoning board of appeals makes the appointment of their choosing. And then that, that appointment is subject to confirmation by the select board again. So myself, Chairman John Leonard from the Board of Appeals, and Tim Zawinski have been talking about this for some time now. And although the board sets the qualifications for the zoning administrator. We thought it best for Mr. Leonard to suggest some qualifications, which I believe you all have with you. And. I guess that's what I would have to say about that and turn it back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Frondak. For the public, would you be willing to. Read the suggested qualifications of the zoning board.
I.
That are being put forward, or would you like me to cover that base for you?
Yeah, unfortunately, I consider myself a tech idiot. I, although I have them somewhere, I was not able to pull them up here at home on the computer, so I don't have them in front of me, unfortunately.
I'll be happy to pinch it for you, Joe.
Thank you.
These are the suggested qualifications. There are six. Five years minimum residency in the town of Milton. Five-year minimum experience as an attorney in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in good standing. With reasonable zoning experience. Or five years real estate experience and a bachelor's degree in urban studies while land use planning. Reasonable familiarity with zoning principles and practices. And a general and knowledgeable. And a general and, and knowledge of the Milton zoning bylaw. In particular. Possess the ability to exercise sound judgment, to communicate clearly both orally and in writing. Be organized, thorough, consistent, and objective. To be patient, kind, and caring in dealing with the public and administering the duties of the zoning administrator at public hearings. For further information, we have a reference to the types of cases to be referred to such the zoning administrator. Cases involving applications for special permits into variances which are routine, straightforward. Not objectively controversial or politically sensitive. In which are not reasonably expected to involve significant opposition, or raise novel issues of first impression. Or otherwise generate substantial public controversy or municipal concerns. I hope that's helpful to you. We have a motion to support this. Is there a member of the select board who would move that motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair. I might have missed the motion, but if you're looking for a second, I can do that.
Okay, Roxanne, are you moving the motion then? They're in seconding.
Oh, sure, sure. I will move that. Move to approve the following appointments. Appointing a zoning administrator as provided for in section nine dash F of Milton zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Musto and Ms. Bradley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So, Mr. Frondak, this is the first of a three-step process that you identified in your remarks, so we look forward to having you back in the not-too-distant future.
Sure, and I will, first thing tomorrow morning, forward this approval to Chairman Leonard. And then I'm sure he will get back to us shortly with the board's appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frondak.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good night.
You too. Agenda item number seventeen is discussion approval, special town meeting, Monday, December five, two thousand twenty-two. I almost said December twenty-fifth. What an interpretation. A, warrant closing date, Wednesday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and B, special town meeting timeline. And. I will just run through that very, very quickly. Wednesday, October twelfth, decided select board will close the warrant. Tuesday, October eighteenth, the select board approved articles for inclusion in the warrant. Select board approved warrant indexed in reading pages. On the nineteenth, email articles to the warrant committee. On Tuesday, November one, select board to approve the warrant. Wednesday, November two, final articles to the printer. Thursday, November ten, warrant to the printer. Wednesday, November sixteen, printer to deliver warrant to the post office. November eighteen, warrant in homes and post office. And Monday, December five, two thousand twenty-two, special town meeting. Just to let you know what goes into this in the background, with some of those dates being relatively tight. Any discussion? We have proposed, Mr. Zulus. We have proposed, Mr. Zulis.
So, Mr. Chair, and I think everyone understands this, but I don't know that we need to point it out or not. The way we, we have set out the timeline for emailing the articles to the warrant committee, then the warrant committee only has about twelve days between getting, technically, between getting the articles and when the warrant has to go to the printer. So I, I just think, you know, I, I guess we all understand that we're going to be sending articles as they come in, right? And maybe it'll say no later than that date or, you know, from the present until, just so everybody understands. The warrant committee is going to be getting these articles before Wednesday, October nineteenth, because otherwise they just, they won't have a chance to, to do it. So that's the only, the only thought. I don't know that we need to change it and say that we're going to be doing it, you know, between now and, and those dates, but as long as we all understand it, and as long as the warrant committee understands it, we want them to think they're only going to get, you know, two weeks to, to look at everything.
That's very helpful. The least we can do is put now this schedule to that effect. Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to approve the warrant closing date of Wednesday, October twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, for the special town meeting.
And, and this would, of course, include approving the timeline for the special town meeting scheduled for December five.
I was going to do that separate, but I want to put it, put it all together. So I'll move to approve the warrant closing date. The warrant closing date of Wednesday, October twelve, two thousand twenty-two, for the December two thousand twenty-two special town meeting and the town timeline as, as published this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis. Is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further comment? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Zulis.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. We move on to agenda item number eighteenth, which is an information discussion regarding the establishment of Milton Public Meeting Podcast initiated by Jay Fundling. And Mr. Fundling is with us. Could you he has been moved up to panelist, so we welcome Jay in just a minute. I know he is multitasking this evening. There he is. Welcome, and thank you for being with us, Mr. Fundling.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So my name is Jay Fundling. I'm at thirty-nine Sias Lane. I'm a town meeting member and a member of the warrant committee. And I just wanted to share what I've, something I've put together. I've made the audio of some of the town public meetings available in podcast form. I wanted to provide an alternate way to follow along with the public meetings. I, I find that for myself, it's easier to follow a public meeting. If I just have the audio in my headphones, it's easier to listen to that while I'm washing dishes, while I'm out on a walk. It's just a lot easier to do other things and listen to the meeting rather than sit down and watch the video. So I chatted with M A, with Milton Access TV, and I would like to emphasize, this is just me doing it on my own. It's not, it's not part of the warrant committee. It's not part of Milton Access TV. Any mistakes that come through are entirely mine. But I chatted with Milton Access TV. They did not object to my grabbing the audio from their recordings. So, so I'm doing that, a bit delayed, but again, any delays is not due to M A TV. It's due to me. I've contacted the chairs of the various boards that have their meetings broadcast on Milton Access TV, because I want to let them know that their words will be going out there. And at the moment, I have, I think, five meetings out on the podcast. I probably should have been prepared for this. I've got at least one select board meeting out there. I know because I was listening to it in my car the other day. And a warrant committee meeting and at least one, yeah, at least one planning board meeting and school committee meeting. So those are out there. If you want to find the podcast, it is on the podcast is currently on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts, Spotify and Pocket Casts, which you may not have heard of, but that's the one I use personally. And really, this podcast is aimed for an audience of one, and if anybody else uses it, that's even better. If somebody has a podcast app they like and this is not on their feed, feel free to contact me. Again, I don't know if I told you the name. I got pretty creative when I named it. It is called Milton Massachusetts Public Meetings. I am not, I like to say I'm not editing or adding any commentary. This is not me coming on, talking about the meetings. I'm just grabbing the Milton Access TV audio and putting it out there. The only things I'm doing, I'm, I'm doing two things. I've gotten rid of the silent time when board is in executive session. So when I publish this meeting in a few days, I'll just cut out that forty-five minutes or however long you're in executive session, so we don't have that silence. And also, if a meeting goes over three hours, I have to split the file in half. You'll get it all in one chunk, but I had to split the file in half. So you'll notice somewhere in the middle, there is some sort of imperfect joining. But aside from that, I'm not editing things or adding commentary. Questions, comments?
I missed it. You have been in communication, of course, with Milton Access TV, and you want to comment on that, Jay?
Yeah, I just reached out to them, asked if they had any objections. I, I chatted with Becky Padera and yeah, well, I wasn't prepared for this.
Michael Lynch, maybe?
Not Mike Lynch, but it was Shane, Shane, yeah. And, you know, Shane sort of emphasized what I've already said. He said, emphasize that this is not in M A TV production. It's not. All the mistakes are mine. And he said, you know, just make sure that people know their, their words are going out there. I haven't had anyone object to say we don't want our meetings broadcast. I, I'm not entirely sure if I'm asking permission or just giving people information, but obviously if somebody strenuously objects to me putting it out there, then
It's, it's information and with attribution to Milton Access TV. Questions or comments for members of the select board? This, from my perspective, brings government closer to our citizens and therefore our citizens closer to town government. Ms. Fagan, did I see your hand?
No.
Okay, Ms. Musto.
Hi, Jay. I just have a quick question because I'm not that tech savvy. So when people go on the podcast, does it generate income or anything, or how does that work?
That's a good question. It, it does not. I mean, I could have signed up for ads, but I figured, again, if I'm going to have an audience of one or maybe two or three, I'm not going to do it. No, no ads, no income. I'm not making money off this. Good question.
Because it sounds like a big undertaking.
Um, it's really not. It's really, I click a button to grab the Milton Access TV video, click another button to turn it into an audio file, click another button to upload it.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm glad it sounds impressive.
Any further comments or questions from Mr. Fundling, Mr. Zulis? Does he have any? Are you recognized?
So I think it's fantastic. I think you deserve a lot of credit, Jay, and you know, you know, with all due respect to all of us, you're a bit of a glutton for punishment.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I listened, I listened to your meeting from two weeks ago while I was driving. For, for me, it was the perfect way to do it. So again, if someone has a pocket, has a podcast app that they like, if mine's not on, reach out to me. I'm at Jay, the letter J, Fundling, at Town of Milton. There you go.
Thank you very much for taking time this evening to be with us for this introduction. It's very informative, very helpful to many, and in the future, even more so. If there's any way we can be supportive, let us and I know you were multitasking, as I said earlier, so we'll allow you to return it to your other task at this time.
Thanks a lot.
Good night, now. At this time, we will turn to agenda item number twenty, nineteen rather, which is a discussion and update of the volunteer process of select board-appointed committees. And this is something that Erin and Roxanne have been working on. They are co-chairs of this new select board committee. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the two of you to provide us an update on how things have been moving forward.
I, I was just going to say that we haven't met since the day before our last meeting, so I don't have anything to update between our last meeting and today. I don't know if Erin has anything different.
Erin, any comment beyond that, with Roxanne?
No, we haven't met. I believe that we're meeting the fifteenth possibly of September due to some vacations. I don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, I might just be having fog brain right now, but I don't know that we ever updated the committee on our first meeting. And if we did
That did not take place, so that's
So, so I'd love to take this opportunity to update not only you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, but also members of the town that happen to be watching or listening. Now, we had an extremely productive meeting back in, I guess I don't have the exact date off the top of my head. But we met with also not only the current town hall employee that works with boards and committees, but we also met with the town clerk's office who was present. And we, we really listened to what their concerns were, what some of the, the issues that have been for the last as the town clerk said, eight years, she's been trying to get some of these processes streamlined. I am very excited. I am not going to lie. I think we can bang this out by the end of the year. I think that come January, we can unroll a whole new process that's very transparent and public. And by a whole new process, I mean the current process, just with some more, some more words around it. So we would be explaining how the committees get appointed. There'll be a little blurb with each committee about how, what the time commitment is, what the, what that committee studies. Roxanne's, the, the next meeting we're going to have on the fifteenth, her big item, which I completely agree with her, is really going through the current boards and committees that are listed. There are ninety-two boards and committees in the town of Milton right now. And some of those are obviously done. I wouldn't say defunct, but they have finished their charge. So we are going through, we're working with Attorney Freitag and Suzanne and, and in the town clerk, in the town administrator's office and the clerk's office to go through those and really make sure that we aren't being redundant in some of our committees. And the ones that are already completed their tasks can be taken off the website and archived so that it doesn't clog up what our citizens see when they go to our website. And we had a discussion around updating our website, and I'm really looking forward to Mr. Milano coming on board, since he didn't speak about just doing that in his town. Because it's something that, it, it needs to be a process where our, our town residents can click on something and be able to fill out a form electronically. They need to be able to see who, when the terms expire. There was a lot of discussion around terms and appointments and making sure that the clerk's office gets that paperwork back. They spend a lot of their time chasing down committee appointments and trying to get that required paperwork signed and filled out and sworn in. And people taking the open meeting training. It is a massive undertaking. So by the discussion that we had, we're really looking to streamline that and make it a more open and transparent process. So I'm super jazzed. There was a lot of discussion around ways to get more involvement of town residents, so making sure that those announcements go out in the bills. So like the stormwater bill, the the, you know, the other taxes that we pay. Milton Time, having them possibly run something about an open and closed period where people can apply to be on committees during a specific time. So all these things are, are just porcupating. We haven't written one word down yet. But, but I'm hoping we're going to do that soon in between my classes. I am going to take a crack at trying to write some procedures for us, which obviously Mr. Chair will come to, come to the board and come to the policy committee, which you and I are on for review. So, like I said, I'm really excited and I think it's going to be a great thing. And I apologize that it has taken eight years for us to get to this point, but I can't wait for twenty twenty-three and a new way of making sure that our boards and committees are really transparent and, and all of our residents feel like they're included. So thank you for allowing Roxanne and I to have this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. And we're blessed in Milton with the level of volunteerism that we have. It's really a wonderful hallmark for the community. Ms. Musto.
I, I'm sorry. I thought we had spoken at our last meeting, so I'm glad you spoke up, Erin. So a lot of what Erin said, we're both committed to transparency in government. So I think, you know, that's a, a thing that we should all be striving for and to continue to do that. I think a lot of what we want to do is, as Erin pointed out, there are a lot of committees. The ninety-two also includes people that are elected and so forth. So I mean, there are some committees that are on there that haven't met in several years. Some are similar in what they do. Anything that we look at, try to streamline or combine, we would always bring it to the full board for approval. And what we are thinking of doing, seeing if they can do an archive page, we would try to work first with you know, Rob Malet in I T and see what he's able to do, help to sit down with him at some point to give some direction on, you know, I, I think the archiving would be good. I think the other thing is when people go to sign up for, or look at committees, when you get the form that they fill out, it might say, you know, so many members or whatever, but then the webs, the, the actual, when you go look it up, the actual committee on the website, it might have a different number. Not all of the committees have a charge listed for them, as we've noticed, and we're trying to figure out what, you know, what they actually do. So I think there are a lot of cleanup to be done. And then, you know, to try to make it, you know, make it easy so people can see where the vacancies are. And as Erin had mentioned, town clerk came in and she had a lot of great ideas on things and talking about some kind of a manual that would be given to all new members of committees, so they know what is expected in terms of, you know, if you're actually running a committee, that you have to post for the committee, that you have to have minutes, you have to be having those minutes approved and then put on the website. And, you know, all of the rules around that. And Kevin Freitag was present, you know, in terms of listening to some of that. We do have a tentative meeting in September, but that may be changed because of some personnel changes at town hall, so we will have to figure that out. But as I said, anything that we bring forward, you know, is really in the spirit of streamlining, making things simple and easy and accessible for the public, making sure that the information's easy to understand. And, you know, in Milton, we're really fortunate. We have so many talented people. Sometimes it's going to be hard if we get a lot of applications for different things, figuring out, you know, who to put on certain committees, because we have a lot of talent out there. So we're just trying to do the best we can do and working together on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are you open to a suggestion and a question? I have one of each. The suggestion is on the form that you mentioned. At the very end, it gives people the option of providing some additional information about themselves. And that's always been a little bit frustrating when we don't have that type of information. As you modify the form, maybe we could at least, if not requesting a, a full resume, a one-pager that relates the person's background to the position that they're expressing an interest in.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. We can make that a requirement, and we're to submit the form, actually.
We'll leave it to your deliberations.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, sure.
That you bring forward. And you mentioned, Erin, the, the process that's involved and the offices that are involved. The amount of time that goes into this at the town side is very considerable as well. Let alone the time of all of the volunteers that are included in the process. And it's, I wonder if there's a way which this could be staggered so that every year, a hundred percent of the volunteers don't have to be processed. But maybe we could do something like exists with the U.S. Senate, one-third, one-third, one-third. So that people know they have a two-year term or a three-year term or one-year term, which then gets converted over time. And they don't have to be worried about every year coming to the clerk's office and being sworn in, but rather this one in for a period of time for a particular committee or board, just a thought.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. I think we can bring that to the, to the clerk's office. I know that the open meeting law needs to be reviewed every two years.
Yep.
So I think that Um, so I think that that will be part of it. Um, and also the clerk had suggested doing, she used to do, uh, I think she said, and I'm probably gonna get this wrong, but I feel like it was a while ago. So, many years ago, she used to do like a massive swearing in on the, on the front line. Right? And I don't remember when she, when that happened, but everybody was sworn in together. Um, and her thought was that in September, there would be a training session where she could get all the forms signed, um, unless a committee was gonna meet before then, uh, at the high school. So that everything will be done, um, in what, what would make their lives easier. Whatever makes the, the town employees and the town clerk's office, their job easier to handle the, you know, over three hundred and fifty volunteers that serve on these committees, I will do whatever. I'm totally deferring to them because this is their job and they know it the best. So, I will take that to her and mention the one-third, one-third, um, and I appreciate your feedback.
Uh, that's not try and create, but something along those lines. And, uh.
Well, I think we should ask, um, the town clerks, and she's the one who's responsible for that. Let's ask her what, if she thinks, uh, you know, that would be a good idea, or what other ideas she might have as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions for Erin and Roxanne? Well, seeing none, thank you both very, very much for this update. It's, um, a very important part of our future. Item number twenty on the agenda, committee appointments. A is the airplane noise advisory committee. There is one vacancy, um, on the airplane noise advisory committee at the present time. And as you mentioned, your work will be, um, being polished up in, uh, January. In the meantime, town government, um, moves on. So, what I'd like to, uh, put on the floor at this point in time is a recommended, um, process for the select board to follow and the appointment of the airplane noise advisory committee. Vacancy, there are, I think, a number of candidates for that. And, uh, different ways in which we could proceed, possibly have this on our agenda for maybe the, uh, September seventh meeting. Any comments?
Well.
Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, my understanding is that there's two ways to proceed. Either, either we can list all of the applicants on our agenda and discuss them all in open session, or we can delegate to a subset of the board, whether it be one person or two, two people. Uh, delegate to, uh, that subset, the responsibility of coming up with a slate. And then here it would be one, uh, one recommendation to the board. So, I think those are the two ways to do it. Either you list them all or you delegate to, to, uh, to a subset of the board, uh, coming up with a recommendation. And if I had that wrong, Kevin, or anyone can correct me. I think that's the way we've done in the past.
I think one other option that we have, uh, that Town, Town Council mentioned was, um, you could have a nomination coming to the select board from the committee. So, we have several approaches, um, that could be considered as outlined here. And, uh, we have a preference. A direction to move forward on.
So, just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. So, if it's a nomination from, from the committee, will the, would the agenda reflect just the one name and nominated by the committee?
In that instance, as in the past, it would be the one name that would be put forward to the select board. We have, uh, I saw some heads nodding, and Roxanne, you're recognized.
Um, I, I, I wanted to see what the rest of the board thought. But I mean, I really feel like we want to stress that transparency is really essential with these, um, appointments and so forth. That's what people really are interested in with town government. So, I'd love to hear what some of the other members think. Cause we have so many good candidates, you know?
Well.
This is all us who recognize.
There's a couple of, there's a couple of contrary thoughts, right? On the one hand, you can list everyone and talk about everyone in public session. On the other hand, there've been times when people are not so wild about having their names discussed in public session and maybe not, not, uh, uh, not, uh, being chosen or, uh, not, uh, not being, um, uh, not being discussed in a positive light. So, so that, and that, and the thought, the concern is that that would depress, uh, people from, uh, from time, from, uh, applying. We've done it both ways. You know, we, 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 uh, listed everyone at times and at times we delegated it. You know, if, if we've had a lot of applicants for that committee, um, you know, maybe the, in, in what, if we wanna make sure everyone's, uh, it's clear who's applied to the committee, um, then we could just list all the candidates and talk about them in, in, in an open session.
Ms. Bradley, you had your hand. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Totally fine, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Um, I'm wondering if we can split the difference. Um, I'm wondering if we can list everybody that's applied and also ask for a recommendation from the chair of the airplane noise committee, um, and say that that is the one that, uh, we will be discussing since that's the one that came forward from the chair of that committee. But in the same token, we'd be also doing the transparency piece where people's, uh, names would be listed. I, um, I, I differ with Mike a little bit on this, just a tad. Um, if people are applying for a public committee, I feel like their names, um, can be made public. Um, it's a public committee. It would be, it would be accessible under employee request. So, I don't see an issue with names being listed. I do see an issue with other pieces of their, you know, application being listed. Um, but I think that way at least we can appease the transparency piece, but also really get input from the airplane noise committee. I mean, I think they are the ones that are working on this, so they're, they, they should have some input on this. Um, on a side note, I won't be there at that meeting, so whatever plan you guys take, just wait with me.
Well, we'll settle on the plan tonight while you're here and then we'll, uh, have the vote at that meeting. Um, Mr. Zulus.
Yeah, let me be clear. I, I have no issue with listing everyone. Um, and I don't think anyone who applies has an issue with being listed. There have been occasions in the past where people have, um, been, um, a little unhappy about being discussed in open session, having that discussion, um, and, uh, in open session, um, of all of the candidates. That's, that's been the only feedback that we've received.
Thank you.
I don't, you know, I mean, uh, as you say, if people apply, then they've opened themselves up. But I, but I don't, I don't think, you know, uh, um, uh, there's a balance there, right? You don't want, you don't wanna depress people from, from applying if they think, oh, these people are gonna be talking about me on TV and all I wanted to do was help out on, on the, on shade trees, right? So, anyway, so I just wanna clarify.
Okay, Ms. Musto, and then I have a comment.
Sure. Um, I think it's important, I, I like, you know, some of the comments that my fellow members have said. I do think that we have to be transparent. The process has to be transparent. That is why we got elected, is to be transparent with the public. So, I'm of the belief that if you run for something or you wanna be on a board or committee, I think putting a name on a list, to me, I don't have a problem with it. As far as discussing everybody, when you look at the list, you, you know, you have looked already at what they've submitted and you have some ideas, and you, doesn't mean you have to negatively talk about different people. You might have preferences that you wanna talk about certain people that are on that list, preferences. So, that would be the way I think of it. The other thing is, it's obviously great to get input from the chair of a committee, but the other thing we have to remember is that we're the electeds. These people that are on committees are, are not elected. We're the ones who are appointing. We're the appointing authority. So, we're really, we appointed people to all of these committees that are chairs and on committees. I've been on committees before. Um, I don't recall being asked as a chair, like, who I wanna put on a committee or whatever. I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to ask a chair. I have no problem with that and getting their feedback. But I don't want it to be that we are basing our decisions solely on what a chair of a committee says when we are looking at all of our candidates, you know? Um, that's how we get some diversity on committees, um, and we get different viewpoints or whatever. So, I, I don't think there's a bad thing to do that. I mean, that would be my thought process. And again, I think if you list everybody, it doesn't mean you have to talk about each of those candidates. It could be the ones that you feel rose to the top on, you know, closest to being on a committee or something. Um, and as I said, uh, we, we have to remember that we're the appointing authority. So, if we're the appointing authority, then we're the appointing authority and we have to, you know, take everybody's input, but ultimately we're responsible for that.
My thought was a combination of your conversations, the possibility of, yes, having all of the candidates, um, open, transparent, ask not the chair of the committee, but ask possibly through the chair for the committee, uh, to make a recommendation. But if they do, they have to give to us the reasons why they support that particular candidate. So, it's, it's not, we're not saying you, the chair, you pick. We're saying, bet this to the committee, sort of like what you do in a department or a division within your organization. Candidates come in through HR or whatever appropriate door, but everybody goes to the department. They get interviewed multiple times, sometimes too many times, some of us have found. And, uh, then a recommendation goes from the department to the, the people upstairs in HR and so on down the line. And, uh, a decision is made. But I, I don't wanna use the word hybrid, but maybe a little combination. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I really like, um, the way that you phrase that. Um, and I, I just, I, I really think that that's a really nice way to go. I wanted to say really quickly that while we do appoint, um, these folks to serve on the committees, they are elected chair by their fellow committee members. So, um, we often try and get as many people as we can from different and diverse backgrounds on committees. Um, and then it's the collective of them that elect the chair. So, um, I, I love the idea of them putting it through the committee and, and really talking about it and coming back to us with, uh, with a recommendation, since they are the ones that are doing this work and are really in the weeds. Just like I wouldn't tell, you know, the town clerk's office how to do their voting registration or whatever it may be. Um, we really need to rely on the people that are the experts on the committees. So, I, I really appreciate your words just now. Thank you.
So, you're, you're putting that forward as the process?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Yes, I am.
The actions to it, just so that we all know where we're going together. And Ms. Musto.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I think, I have no problem with listening to what the chair says or the committee comes up with, but I just wanna make sure that we're not ruling other people out when we're, when we're doing that, you know? Everybody has an opinion and an observation. And I feel that we also have to look at all of the candidates too. And so while we, we listen to what, you know, committees tell us, of course we do. Those are our peers too. But we are the elected people that, that, uh, that appoint people on committees, which include when the committee figures out who the chair is. So, and, and the spirit of being transparent, I think it's fine to get the opinion of a committee or the chair, but I wanna make sure that we are going to commit to looking at all of the candidates, even if it isn't somebody that the chairs or the committees have thought of.
And that's what was explicitly expressed and I think contained in what Erin put forward. Uh, we would have indeed all, a review of all of the candidates as select board members in addition to what comes forward as a recommendation from the, the committee. So, one does not offset the other. Mr. Zulus.
And that wouldn't be a change to what we've been doing since I've been on board. So, you know, the fact that we, uh, look at all the candidates, consider all the candidates, you know, there's, there, there have been times when there have been a lot. Example, when we did the Equity and Justice Committee, we had about fifty applications. And so rather than list more than fifty applications, we delegated it and we came up with a slate of eleven names. And it was delegated to me. We came up with a slate of eleven, eleven names and then we voted on the slate. So, um, so it's no different. So, than, than we've been doing for, um, you know, since I've been here. And, uh, whether we, we, we haven't always gotten, um, a recommendation from a chair or from a committee, but, you know, we wanna get a recommendation, that's fine. Doesn't mean we have to accept it, you know?
Right.
Feedback doesn't matter.
So, are we together on the process? I see affirmatives and thumbs up, so, uh, we'll outline that. I know Amy and Marianne and Lynn have, uh, captured this outcome. And we'll move accordingly for the air noise advisory committee. Thank you for that good discussion. Very, very valuable. Item number twenty-one on the agenda is discussion approval appointment process for the master plan implementation committee. As we all know, um, town meeting has, uh, added, uh, two additional positions on the master plan implementation committee. And, um, what might be good for us to do tonight is to focus primarily on the process that we wanna follow for the identification and the appointment of those, uh, two new members. We know, um, that there's, uh, one member whose term goes until January of this year. And there's a strong likelihood that, um, four other members, the representative from the planning board, the representative, um, of, from the select board and, uh, two members who were on the, uh, publication work when it was begun about eight years ago. Uh, uh, candidates for reappointment and all likelihood. So, what, what I'd like to suggest is we zero in or focus in on, um, the two new positions. Remember, it was increased the town meeting from five to seven, if that makes sense. Any suggestions, um, comments? There are a number of options that might be creatively developed. We've discussed, uh, some earlier. Another one might be, uh, possibly to have one member, a delegator from the select board, one member from the planning board, uh, going back to what some of the original, um, uh, work was, uh, to come up with, uh, two candidates to, that would be then forwarded to each of the boards. I think the door is wide open. I don't have a particular recommendation to make at this particular time. Mr. Zulus.
So, so my understanding of this is a joint appointment. So, I, I, I don't, I, I, so I don't know if we're gonna discuss candidates and have a vote. I don't know how we do it without a joint meeting. Right? Um, so I, so I think as a, at, at the first instance, we're gonna have to have a joint meeting to have the vote and the discussion, right? We've done that before when we've appointed, um, when we have, we had to appoint members to, uh, the Parks Commission when there was a vacancy. It was a joint appointment, you know, with the Parks Commission and the, and the select board. So, when we've had those before, those vacancies, we've, we've kind of, we've, we've done a joint meeting. So, I, it seems to me we have to have a joint meeting. Then the question is, well, who are we gonna vote on? Are we gonna list all of the applicants? Are we gonna, we're gonna get feedback from the master plan implementation, implementation committee? Are we gonna delegate? My understanding is that I, I saw a little bit of planning, planning board meeting and they, 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 they did delegate to a subset of their board. Um, and then they came up with three candidates. I think they were under the misimpression that there were, there were three openings in addition to, to the, three openings. Whereas if, if we're gonna appoint the four and, and then we have the one, Ms. Benson, who's gonna be on till next January regardless. So, I, so I think, so I think, you know, they have three that, that we, that they've come up with. And, and the question is, well, do we vote on them if we have a joint, joint meeting? Or do we, do we have the slate or do we look at them all? And I can tell you that, the, 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 the planning board had a checklist of what was important to them in, in coming up with their slate. And, and, you know, I wrote them down quickly. There was ten. I didn't get them all. But the first was, you know, how long they've lived in Milton, what type of properties they own, do they own a business, how much financially invested in the town, you know, what that means really. Likelihood remaining. How much financially invested in the town? I don't know what that means really. Likelihood remaining in Milton. Determine that, but active in neighborhoods to get that. What is their Milton network? Not sure what really that meant. And then, and then down at the bottom, I think there's professional qualifications. So we might agree with that, those, that checklist. And we might agree with the two, the two or three people they suggested. Or we may wanna open it up. But I think, I think at core, we kind of need a joint meeting to, to do that.
Thank you. Other comments or thoughts? Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So I also watched the planning board meeting. And I'm gonna get back to that in a second. But I really liked what. Member Zulus, Vice Chair Zulus said about a joint meeting. I think that we should stick with what has been the process. And since it's to be. Jointly appointed, I agree with him that we should have a joint meeting. I did not see that the planning board actually voted on the three people that they put forward. It's my understanding that it was. It was, I, I, it was, I don't want to say dismissed, but they were, they decided that they determined that they would wait until they heard from the MPIC on who the MPIC thought should come forward. While I was on vacation last week, I did have some communications with Suzanne and Meredith Hall, who's the chair of the planning board. Regarding the, some of the names that were cited, because I didn't have copies of those applications. And it comes to, come to find out, some of the people that had applied weren't even listed on the chair of the planning board's list or Suzanne's list, but I had found them in a file that Suzanne had sent me a while ago. Before we go any further, I think that we need to make sure that we're all working off the correct list of those that have applied. And that not only the select board, but the planning board and the MPIC committee has all of the applications to review. I want to make sure that nobody's left off. I want to make sure that those that have applied. Get a fair opportunity. And so that would be where I'd like to start this process, Mr. Chair. I, I'm open to hear what others on, on our committee have to say. I will say that I would hope that you, Mr. Chair, would make sure that we didn't have a checklist like this to go over. It was very appalling to me to hear some of the. Boxes that were being talked about during that committee. And the chair of the committee. It, she didn't disagree, but she also didn't stop that from happening. I don't think that if you own property in the town, it means that you love the town anymore than my neighbor right there. Who's been renting there for the last twenty years. She's lived here longer than me. And it's not right that we, as a town, and I'm, I'm getting emotional because this is really, I'm, I was really upset about this. It is not okay that we put an emphasis on people that own property in our town. It's not okay that we put an emphasis on, on how many properties you own. Or what your skin in the game is in our town. If you live in this town and you've made a commitment to live in this town, I believe you have skin in the game. If you live next to me and you rent, I treat you the same way as that person right over there that owns a big giant house. Doesn't matter to me. And it shouldn't matter to any of us. Those that rent have the same rights that I do. The same rights in this town. And if they're willing to volunteer to be on a committee, God love them. I mean, these committees are rough. They meet all the time. Good God, they take energy. There's anger. There's bickering. There's all this stuff. And I just, I was really taken aback by what was said when I watched that. I'm sorry. I said I was.
Erin, you've been lost?
I don't think.
Watch your audio.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I didn't get that. Could you try again? Mr. Chair, it's your Suri. If you hit a Suri button.
Interesting question.
I know Suri, she loves me. So that's why you couldn't hear me.
That's okay.
Okay.
We understand.
I just, I just wanted to say that I would hope that moving forward, we as a town would have a, a wider view of those that apply to be on our committees. And not try and set forth checkboxes, just, you know, how long you've lived in this town. I've lived here a lot less time than that neighbor that's been here for twenty years renting that entire time. She knows everybody on the street. I can't remember anybody's name. It doesn't matter. And I just, I would hope, Mr. Chair, that as we move forward as our committee, that you would make sure that you hold myself and everybody else to the line of inclusion and the, of the line of wanting our neighbors to apply to committees. So I, that's where I start and I stand. And, and I'm, I thank you for this moment, because I was really upset, really upset.
You're most welcome. And I've underscored the point that all of the applicants will be identified. And all of the applicants will go to the select board, the planning board, and the master plan implementation committee. That's, is that a correct understanding?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes. And I do have a list. I went over the list with Suzanne and Meredith. I can't remember what day it was. It might have been Thursday or Wednesday. Again, I was on vacation. I don't know. But I believe that we have an up-to-date list as of that one. I think, think, you know, there's just a lot happening. And I think it just got lost in the way. And I just want to make sure that every application is being reviewed that came in.
Thank you. Ms. Musto, and then I'll have a comment.
Um, yes. I wanted to say that I did like Mike's idea about the joint committee meeting. I think we should have that. And I think, I think we have most of the applications. So to your point, Erin, we should make sure that we have them all. And just briefly looking at them, I think we have a lot of, again, talented variety of people. So I think that's good news. And I look forward to having a joint meeting and discussing the different candidates. Thank you.
Okay. My observation is tied to something mentioned earlier this evening. With respect to what we have as information on the, the candidates. It would seem to be extremely important to us to have at least a one pager. On every candidate in the application that shows his or her fit with what the charge of the MPIC is. That's what this seems to be all about. And the closer that we can get to that, the better. Also, I'll report later that Meredith and I had a, a very good meeting. Opening the channels of communication between the planning board and the select board. And it's recognized that there's a, a, a ten-year limit on MPIC that expires in two thousand and twenty. Cognizant of that as well, and that. Im- implementation for the town of Milton, our master planning, more appropriately for the town of Milton. Probably has to go through a reformulation process. And that's something that you don't wait for. The sun sets. You start about eighteen months beforehand and begin the preparation for that very important event. And having. People who would probably be a part of that process if that comes to pass on the MPIC. Would be a, a value proposition. So that's why I look toward a recommendation that we have. Information that shows a really good fit between what the person wishes to bring in the charge, what they have as their experience in the charge. Just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so are you thinking the candidates would prepare their, their? It would have to be the candidate. We, we would want someone, someone using their own editorial view. So, so I guess we'd have to be the candidates adding that to the applications then if we did that. But it seems to me, if we, if we're, we're all agree, we, we should have a joint meeting, then we should probably just list all the candidates. And list all the candidates and then, and then go through it.
I think we're all agreed on that. But we want to have more about these candidates as was expressed. Advisory Committee, as was expressed in the general conversation about the work that Erin and Roxanne are doing. Then what is on that form, if a person chooses not to provide a resume or an addendum that shows their relationship, or the relationship between their background and experience in the charge of whatever the committee is that they might be applying for, candidate for. Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Chair, are you gonna do what, not, well, I guess it's up for discussion. Are, are we gonna do exactly what we just discussed with the Air Point Noise Committee? Which is get input from the MPIC chair after they discuss it with their committee?
That's up to you as the select board, if that's your recommendation.
I, yeah, I don't see why. Go ahead, please.
Roxanne, I, you have a comment? I saw you. That would be fine with you, Roxanne?
Oh, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Mike did.
But I saw you nodding and I didn't know if you wanted to add a comment.
No, that seems fine. I mean, that seems at the process that we were doing for the other committee to get the input and then ultimately look at them all, right?
Mr. Zulus.
I'm just gonna say I agree with that.
Ms. Bradley.
Y- yes, Mr. Chair.
And I agree as well. So. It, it sounds like we have a recommended appointment process. That includes having all of the candidates identified, having a statement that fits their interest to the charge. And. That we, in the presence of, I have a, that includes. A recommendation or recommendate, recommendations, I should say, from MPIC. And then a concluding joint meeting of the select board and the planning committee. Is that where we all are? Okay. Mr. Zulus.
Just, just one add to that. I think we're, 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 we have a consensus about appointing the, the four that need to be appointed. And obviously, Ms. Benson is, doesn't need to be appointed. She's gonna stay on. And so I think we have a consensus that we're talking about two. Is that, is that right?
We're just talking about the two. Yeah. That clarification would be, so to one emotion. To this effect as summarized with the inclusion of this being for the two positions. Okay, so. Mike, are you moving?
Oh, sure. I'll, 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 I'll move, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. I will move. To, to approve the following as the appointment process for, for the master plan implementation committee. One, that all of the applications be listed on our agenda for our joint meeting with the ma, with the planning board. Two, that we have a joint meeting with the planning board to vote on two additional members. And to, to reappoint the four existing members. And three, to solicit the feedback from the master plan implementation committee on their recommendations for those two appointments.
I've captured everybody?
Did I get it all?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roxanne, thank you. Roll call vote?
The only thing that's missing.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley.
Okay, the only thing that's missing, and I don't know if it needs to be on there, is the, the one pager, the statement.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, okay. Mr. Zulus, would you be willing to add as a friendly amendment?
My only concern with a one pager is just, just logistically, are we gonna go back to all the applicants and say, hey, look, we need a, we need a, we need a one pager from you? Is it, and who's gonna do that? And what's the timeframe? And, I mean, I guess these are all things that can be, where, I don't, I'm not opposed to it. It just may add some layers, a few cycles to this.
Some of them did give not only a resume, but they also filled out their. Their connections, but some did not.
So this would be, we'd have to go back, I think, in fairness, to all of them and say, look, we're now asking for that. Is this what you want, right? Just to make, because it wasn't asked for before, so their, their answer might be different now if it's asked for, right? So, so in fairness, I think we gotta go back to all of them and say, hey, we want the one page. We got, and for some people, we got yours. But now that we're asking for it, if you want to change it.
Right. And somebody who submitted it may want to revise it.
Right, right. So anyway. So I, I, I don't have an objection to that. It just may add some cycles, but, you know.
So we'll include that then. I see a consensus on that. Okay, is there a second to Mr. Zulus' motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Beat me.
Do you know other comments? Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Very, very helpful discussion. And I will contact the chair of the planning board committee. And let Meredith know of this outcome. So that she can share that with her committee as well as they're going through their work. So we're keeping that channel of communication open and working collaboratively. Item number twenty-two, discussion update approval Milton Public Education Government MPIC hybrid meeting options for Milton. And Anne Marie, could I turn to you for this, please?
Sure, absolutely. Last week, we had a meeting with MPIC to discuss having hybrid meetings for select board and school committee. Present at the meeting was Arthur Doyle, myself, Amy Dexter, Ada Rosemary, Bill Ritchie, Clinton Napoli, Christine Stanton, Rob Mallett, Michael Lynch from AgPEG, MPIC, and Shane Bradenberg from MPIC. And the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the coordination of a hybrid meeting. And going forward and how best to accommodate the meetings of the select board and the school committee. The meetings, the meeting of the committees can be conducted in three ways. You can have a remote meeting. You can have a back-in-person meeting, or you can have a mixture of the two, which is the hybrid meeting. Where some people are in, in person, some people are remote. At this current time, the meeting spaces that are capable of holding a hybrid meeting are only the John Cornyn Conference Room, the Carol Blue Conference Room at Town Hall. Those are both located at Town Hall. And the Paul Kelly Community Room, which is located at the Council on Aging. MPIC has spent the last two years planning and upgrading and coordinating and installing all new broadcast equipment. To date, due to supply chain issues, the studio space in the high school has not been able to be accommodated for hybrid. Nor has the auditorium at the high school. So the school committee, if they would like to hold hybrid meetings, is going to have to look at a different space. Which is going to be either at Town Hall at one of the two conference rooms or at the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging presents a few issues for us that we're gonna have to work through. It will require a lot of coordination between the school department and Consolidated Facilities Department with respect to setting up for meetings, breaking down for meetings, then setting them back up for the Council on Aging programs for the particular day. It will increase the cost for their utilities, their heat, their electricity, their air conditioning. And MPIC will need at least two to three hours to set up before a meeting to test equipment. So again, that could have an impact on, on programming at the Council on Aging later in the afternoon. Setup for the hybrid is more complex. MAC equipment needs to be set up and secured before the meeting. Boards and committees using the hybrid setup will need to have members of the committee act as Zoom hosts to recognize the participants attending the meeting remotely when needed. And then may be slight delays between the Zoom and the in-person attendees. The staffing requirements for the three different types of meetings that we can hold are, an in-person meeting, there would be, Milton Access TV would have to have two staff members, typically one staff member and a volunteer, high school volunteer. The Zoom meetings, they only need one staff member. However, for a hybrid meeting, they need three staff members, which is the Operational Director and two MPIC staff members. MPIC can accommodate one hybrid meeting per evening. So that could potentially create some issues, because as the selectmen meet on the first and third Tuesday of the month, the School Committee meets on Wednesdays, the Warrant Committee also meets on Wednesdays, and they're talking about potentially holding hybrid meetings as well. So we've gotta work out some issues there. MAC TV will provide training to committee members to be a Zoom host. MAC TV will work with the boards and committees to introduce new setups and how to work remote aspects of the meeting. I already told you about the meeting schedule for the selectmen in the, on the School Committee. And one other caveat to this, according to the Attorney General's Office, which I've gotten a definite clarification on, until March thirty-one of two thousand twenty-three, it's fine to hold a hybrid meeting where less than a quorum of your board is in attendance. So in other words, some members of, of the Select Board can be live and in person, and others can attend remotely. There must be remote access option for the public in that case, if you do it that way. So we have some work to still do on it. Hybrid meetings do present some challenges for us, but, yeah, we will have to probably talk with the Consolidated Facilities Department about having staff members work overtime to break down, set up these meetings and talk to the schools about how we can cross-share on that particular subject. So again, it was a great meeting, everybody really wants to work in, in, in coordination of getting hybrid up and running, and I'll keep you posted as we continue to work through all these issues.
Thank you, Anne Marie, very thorough. Select Board members, questions, comments, ideas? Ms. Musto, you are recognized.
Thank you. I serve on the Board for MPIC. And they were saying that, I think there are about six different committees that they, they by contract televise. So there, you know, we're talking schools, you know, Planning Board, there's several different ones. And so it's quite a challenge to try to figure out everybody's schedule, because they can only do one hybrid a day, so it is really a challenge. It's not just us and the, you know, the Select Board and the schools, it's, it's other committees that they're doing now. So, you know, Zoom meetings or, you know, in person, that if they do the hybrid, it's gonna be challenging for them. And if we, if, for instance, have to switch a night, you know, as we do, for instance, September, that was hybrid, and, you know, schools were having a meeting on that, they wouldn't be able to do both. So it's really gonna be a challenge, I think.
It is, it's gonna be a lot of coordination. We were talking about initially just having committees that meet on Zoom now, to just continue to meet on Zoom, like your Plan, Board, your Board of Appeals, those types of committees. And really to try to focus just on the Select Board meetings and the School Committee meetings and the Warrant Committee meetings now, at this point in time. Because it is complex, and to try to get it to work for everybody.
Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, you know, just in terms of coordination, you know, you know, I, I would favor, if, if we're gonna have a hierarchy here, favor the elected boards, right? So I would say, you know, Select Board and School Committee and, 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 and I, you know, if Planning Board wants to do hybrid, and, and there's an issue, if it's Planning Board versus Warrant Committee, I would say Planning Board, they're an elected committee, they should and the Warrant Committee, with all due respect, it's an appointed committee with a somewhat limited charge. They, 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 they could continue with their, with their
Zoom.
With their Zoom meeting, but, but I, so just in terms of hierarchy, I would, I would favor the elected boards.
It's a great idea.
If it was, you know, one or other, and, and if, and if the idea is, well, let's start with the the Select Board and the School Committee, let's see how that works, right? See how it works. I think, I think I'd favor that.
One of the things discussed, of course, with hybrid is that we don't know, but we would soon learn what numbers of people would be interested in personally attending a Select Board meeting if we went on hybrid. Would it be a smaller number, because numbers of them can meet with us from home? In bad weather elements, would that change the mix? And accordingly, what would we then need as a meeting facility space? Would it be as large as the Council on Aging? Or would other alternatives work for us if we anticipated a reduced presence? In-person presence, I should say. Mrs. Zulus?
Yeah, I, I, I think, Arthur, you'd probably have to allow for allow for significant in-person presence, because, you know, it's kind of different by the meeting. You could get eighty, you know, we, we had a hundred teachers a few years ago for a meeting. Who showed up at the Council on Aging, right? So, but I think it's hard to say, well, we may have fewer, so we can have a smaller meeting room. It may be right, but you never know, right? You never know what's gonna draw people out. So I, I think that would be hard to, to, I think that would be hard to try to.
The only way we can ascertain it, I would think, is by testing the waters.
Testing, yeah. Well, we still have some more work to do on this. And again, we're all committed to making it work, so I will keep you updated as we move forward with meetings. And hopefully it will have smooth sailing.
Mrs. Zulus, back to you.
Can we, can we meet hybrid next time? Can we, are we, are we in a position to meet hybrid next time, or no?
We, it's set up, we are set up for hybrid. In the John Cronin Conference Room, the Carol Blue Conference Room, and the Paul Kelly Community Room over at the COA. Those are the three locations that can handle hybrid at this point in time.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to get back to in-person itself. Our hybrid, hybrid, so we have, you know, our, our opportunity to be, meet together in person, to the extent we can. I mean, you know, people can't, they can always participate hybrid, but, but I'd like to have that option to, to, to be in the same room and, and have people have, have, you know, may, have, have residents attending the room.
Anne Marie, how much time do you anticipate for the fine tour need? Will be needed before we could actually do that, or are we good to go? There's a little quirkiness still out there.
Yeah, there's some staffing issues that I have to work through, some of those pieces. We, we may be able to do it on the seventh, have hybrid on the seventh of September. I will work with MPIC and, and see if we'll be able to pull it off for the seventh. I have to speak with Christine and see what's on her agenda that day as well. And Bill Ritchie from Consolidated Facilities to coordinate.
Be able to the Board that we go with the seventh or the twenty-third, depending upon the resolution of logistics and technology between now and then?
Sure.
Mike, okay, that seems to work with everybody. That just gives us a little bit of flexibility. Know what might come over the transom. And Anne Marie, do we know if any other committee is going to meet before we would meet in hybrid model? But I'm looking for somebody who's a Guinea pig.
I don't know the answer to that, so I will check with MPIC tomorrow. I also want to add that MPIC was very proud of the fact that they had done a survey, and we are well ahead of a lot of other communities on putting hybrid in our, our conference rooms. So I, I do wanna make sure that you're aware that how hot MPIC has worked to get at least three rooms hybrid ready. And because of supply chain issues, the schools will have to wait a little bit.
Well, well said, Anne.
Kudos to MPIC.
Absolutely. They really worked out on this.
Yes.
And it's also pointed out that we have a constraint on meeting rooms in the town.
Yes.
Somewhere down the line, we're going to have to come to terms with that. Okay, we're in good shape. Anything further on that item? If not, we'll go to Agenda Item Twenty-three, which is Discussion Approval One-Day Local Licenses. We have two, one for the Eustace State Historic, Historic New England for a painted picnic, and the other for Forbes House Museum Bonfest. And the dates are given for each of them? And we have a motion. Did you get, anybody have a question about either one of them, or?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair moved to approve a one-day local license to the Eustace State Historic and Historic New England for a painted picnic on Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, from twelve PM to four thirty PM.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
It's moved and seconded, seeing no comment. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve a one-day local license to the Forbes House Museum for Bonfest on Sunday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, from four PM to seven.
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Seeing no comment. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number twenty-four on our agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, I just want to echo your remarks earlier in the evening regarding the meeting this morning with Mr. Milano. It was a great meeting. I think the town should be very excited about the future. And for the town, he's, he's young, he's energetic, he's got some great ideas. And it, it's gonna be great. You guys are gonna be quite pleased. So, so, so that's really good. Secondly, I wanted to let you know, I think you are, I'll, do already know about Suzanne Bridges in our department is, has given her notice and is leaving our employ for a better position, so good for her. But she's been a great asset in the town in, in the little bit of time I've worked with her. Very committed employee, loved her role, loved her work, and she will be sorely missed. But I do wish her well in her new venture. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Any questions for Anne Marie? There's the Chair's report, just two things that I want to underscore tonight. One is there is a new Massachusetts Department of Transportation advisory. We got an East Milton Square Bridge deck reconstruction is repaving, being done on some of the roadways around the deck due to a difficulty that was found with the first pavement that was put down, this is the McAdam. And there's a rework schedule that follows Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, and Thursday, August twenty-five. Milling operations, that's the excavation, will occur overnight between seven PM and five AM. And Friday, August twenty-sixth, and Saturday, August twenty-seventh, paving operations will occur overnight. And on Sunday, August twenty-eighth, and Thursday, September one, pavement markings will occur overnight, again, seven PM to five AM. And Anne Marie, maybe we can get that latest DOT announcement and put it on the website?
Absolutely.
To replace the one that was there. And the second was just to go back to the reference that I made earlier, to the meeting between myself and the Chair of the Planning Board. The, the bottom line, if I can use that right expression, is that we have established a channel of communications. There are a lot of topics that we touch bases on for mutual discussion in the future, and we'll see about activities that can be done together. The East Milton Overlay was one of them. Chair has an interest in the beautification of the business districts in town. There's a scenic signage activity that's been initiated, a recommendation from the Conservation Commission to the Planning Board that was introduced at the last Planning Board meeting, that they will probably take the vote on at their next Planning Board meeting. And the Chair encouraged the Select Board to move forward on doing the same thing. So we can put that on the agenda, we didn't have sufficient time for it tonight. We talked about the warrant being prepared for December. That's bases on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which is, which has been covered already in discussion this evening. The reformulation of the Master Plan with such bases on our future possible meetings that we will want to engage in, and what the parties for those discussions would be. And we already have a recommendation coming forward on the MPIC appointments of the two new positions that would potentially engage the entire Select Board with the entire Planning Board. All the topics that were put on the table were housing, the Housing Production Plan, the multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities, which we will have a discussion of with the Town Planner and Director of Community Development at a September meeting. And tangentially, issues that we probably have to take a look at, such as economic development in the town of Milton. And how we do our environmental scanning, how it is that we go about or establish a process whereby we can anticipate what's coming around the corner, so that the town isn't blindsided and, and forced into adverse positions or adversarial positions, because we don't need that to be the experience of Milton for its future. So much to do, many possibilities, positive approaches to be followed collaboratively and jointly, and more to be said in the future. Any questions? I'd be happy to entertain them. Yes, Ms. Bradley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if, if your discussion with the Chair of the Planning Board was mentioned, the, the studying of the ADUs. I know that was sent back at the last town meeting, and I'm just, with the special town meeting coming up on the agenda now that that's set.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if they've, if they've talked about that at all.
That's, thank you for raising that. That's the, the alternative options by right and by special permit. And if I remember correctly, the Chair, at that time, the time that we met, I did not know whether or not they would be ready for the special town meeting in December. Good question. Thank you for that. Item number twenty-seven, future meeting dates. Did we have, you have a calendar that Lynn has prepared, shared with everybody, and we can share that with other departments as well for coordinating purposes? Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it very, very much, and we know we'll have a possibility of a few changes as we go through the course of the year, because the unexpected does have a tendency to arrive.
Arrive, yeah.
But we'll be flexible and we'll take care of that. And then we want to take a look at the Select Board between planning. We identified doing that in September. And with a new Town Administrator coming aboard, it would seem late September would probably be more appropriate than early September. That's usually been held on a Saturday from noon to three o'clock. I want to have an opportunity to discuss this with Nick and Anne Marie to get an idea of what we put together as an agenda with your input and a support and collaboration, so that we have a productive meeting with meaningful outcomes. Yes, Roxanne, you're recognized?
Thank you.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could just read out the dates for September and October so people that are watching might be able, if our Select Board meetings could just be able to jot them down?
Happy to do so, Lynn. Do you have those at hand by chance? We have September seven and September twenty-three, I believe.
Twenty-third of Friday.
Seven and twenty.
Seven and twenty, great.
And then October is the fourth and the eighteen.
So the fourth was the one that we needed to look at?
I have Wednesday, October fifth. Because that's the Jewish holiday.
Right.
I said it is Wednesday, October fifth.
And then what's the date of the other October date? Is it the ninth, the eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
October five and October eighteen. Thank you. Next item is Discussion Approval Meeting Minutes, July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Zulus? Item or the previous item?
Previous item, Mr. Chair, just to, to, to highlight. I may have, on the Saturdays in September, I may have youth sports workaround issues. So, but we'll vote, whether it be morning or afternoon, just Saturdays are youth sport.
Okay. And we'll build that into the solicitation process.
Okay.
Morning, afternoon, evening.
And, and look, I, I can miss.
If it goes into an evening session, we'll go from six to eleven, Mike.
Yeah, there we go. Now, now youth sports issues there.
Thank you for raising that. Any other comments on that topic? And we will poll everybody by all means. So we have now twenty-eight Discussion Approval Meeting Minutes of July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. Through a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes from July twenty-seven.
Ms. Musto, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any discussion on those minutes? I found them to be all significant change? Mrs. Zulus, any comment?
No.
Okay, fine. Hearing none. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. That being done, we are ready to entertain at ten oh six.
I'll, I'll move to, I'll move to, you're noting that we, we didn't quite come in under the three-hour podcast time, but but that can be a goal. That can be a goal for the.
I keep trying to work on ten o'clock, but we did ten oh one one night, and it's ten oh six tonight. We'll get under that ten o'clock mark.
But he's gonna cut out, he's gonna cut out the executive committee meeting. So we made it under three.
But that doesn't mean we should have to be here after ten, you know?
Right, right.
So we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And Anne Marie and Lynn, thank you both very, very much. And a thank you to Milton Access TV. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.